Welcome to the Board of Education's January 9th, 2023 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Owen. I would like to take a moment to remind everyone in attendance that the Board of Education's public meetings are the only opportunity we have to discuss items that come before us as an elected body. We are very glad you chose to attend, but please refrain from applause, cheers, groans, booing, or conversations with others in the audience as this can be very distracting to Board members. If you feel the need to have a discussion with someone sitting next to you, please step outside to do so. Any Knox County resident can sign up to address the Board during public forums, so please be respectful and courteous of that as we work through our Board business. And Board members, you received an email from Dr. Roswick announcing that we would be adding the Fiscal Year 2022 Internal School Fund Audit Report to tonight's agenda. And we'll be receiving that following the Superintendent's report. Are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? Do we have, so a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Roswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I have some brief updates since our last meeting. I'd like to begin first by highlighting the new semester that started today. I welcome all the kids and students back and families as well. We're thankful to see our students back in the buildings, and I know that all of our employees are eager to get back to teaching and learning. I'll say this, I think I kind of liked having the break a little more on the backside of Christmas. It was kind of nice to have that. So I think a lot of folks were, we heard from some parents though, that they were kind of ready to come back earlier, so I don't know what that means. But, but I think it was good. Good break. I think people got a good restful time. Just wanted to say also on Friday that I was able to visit Adrian Burnett to celebrate the ribbon cutting for the new school. I want to thank the staff and families of Adrian Burnett and the entire Halls community for their support and advocacy to make this project a reality. It's kind of neat hearing the different people who were able to come and speak to everything that went into that and how many years it took for that to happen. And it is really a beautiful school. The community really turned out for that event. We, the building will deliver on our four priorities. It will be a tremendous investment in the Halls community. Stephanie Prince and the staff of Adrian Burnett have worked extremely hard to get ready for this transition. And our operations team has done an excellent job for many years as well, working on that. I know that staff had to deal with hopeful starting it this past fall, and we had to delay that to make sure everything was because some parts that hadn't gotten in to finish that project. So they were, they were grateful and it was great to see them in their classrooms getting everything ready. Also want to thank Knox County Mayor Glenn Jacobs and former Ward Member Patty Bounds for their consistent report, excuse me, support of this project. Ms. Bounds and the mayor are both able to be there as well. And then finally, I just want to remind everyone that next Monday, January the 16th, is Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, and our schools will be closed. So Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Roswick. So next up is our Fiscal Year 2022 Internal School Funds Audit Report. And we have someone here with Pew and Associates. Ms. Himmelgarn, did you want to?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We have Ted Hoats and Gary Mitchell from Pew CPAs here to give us a summary of the results from the Internal School Funds Audit.
It's like 400 pages, and obviously we won't go over all of that. We will go over highlights of that report and a few sections of it. But it, it's a process, this audit. Want to give you a little bit of background. First of all, this is an audit of the internal school funds only. So this is basically the checking accounts that are at the individual schools, 90-plus schools. It does not include an audit of transactions at Central Office. That's part of the, it's a separate audit. The audit process, well, first of all, it covers the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022, so last of school year. And the process started back in May. In May, our team would go to each individual high school and test transactions at each individual school. And then the remaining schools were tested by records being brought into the UT Tower, East Tower. And we had a war room in there and basically spent June and July there doing, doing that testing. As bookkeepers came back, we had follow-up questions in August, and after that, we were drafting this short report. With the, I guess, a few other notes. This is, you know, we are required to test a bunch of transactions and for, for all types of things. And in the nature of internal school funds or just the school accounts, there, there's only so many controls. So it's common to have exceptions. We try to evaluate whether exceptions are going up or down and which areas are going up and down and try and assess from there. But we did go over our findings with, with management, with, first with Jennifer and also Ron McPherson and Garrett Raden. And then we also had a follow-up meeting with the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. So this, I think it's important for the Board to realize that this report received a lot of attention from school management. With that said, we'll actually go through parts of the report. On the screen, you have, it's Roman numeral page two. I'm not sure if it's PDF page six or so. But this is the start of the audit report, PDF page six. This is the start of the audit report. It's approximately three pages. If you've seen other audit reports, it's worded kind of funny. It's worded funny only because we're under a report example by the state of Tennessee. This report is not in accordance with GAAP. It's not supposed to be. Instead, it's in accordance with the state, the state manual, the Tennessee Internal School Uniform Accounting Policy Manual. And so if you read it carefully and seems unusual, keep in mind, this is the standard report for an internal school fund. So it is the report you should see from an auditor. It's not a modified report that there are issues in, with the numbers. So it is your standard report for an internal school fund audit. Let's go ahead and skip to page, where the, it's page one on the bottom. It's about page nine, correct? On, on the PDF pages. And these four pages, basically PDF page nine through 12 or report pages one through four, is a summary of first two pages of the balance sheet. And the second two pages are the income statement. And a few key numbers from here is that, first of all, your cash is between, all the checking accounts held at these schools is roughly 13 million, 13.6 million. That is an up from 12 million the year before, and that would be at the bottom of page two. Now, what I'd like to also look at are the total revenues or basically receipts and dispersments. That would be on the bottom page four or PDF page 12. So keep in mind, transactions here are typically small. You typically have small transactions to the school checking account. Larger ones would go through the Central Office. But total revenues for the year were over 20 million, 20.1 million. Total dispersments expenditures were 18.2 million. So that's, that's a lot of small transactions. And as we compare findings for this year to last year, I think one important thing to realize is FY '22 had a whole lot more activity than FY '21. Because FY '21, we were still dealing with COVID to a higher extent than we were in FY '22. Because like the $20 million in revenue this year is compared to 13 million in fiscal year '21. But 20 million is pretty much the norm for regular operations. So activity was back to closer to where we expected it to be. That's the financial side of things. Let's go ahead and skip forward to the findings section. And that's way, I'll wait till it comes up. It's on report page 384. But it's, PDF pages is beyond that. Okay. Yes. Yes, PDF page 395 if you're following it there. And this is the start of the findings section. There are 12 findings. There were 11 findings a year ago. We'll go over that summary shortly, but one finding went away. There are two new findings this year. As far as number of instances, number of instances were about the same for FY '22 compared to FY '21. Maybe probably down just, just, just a few, but pretty similar to a year ago. I guess the, the good news from that perspective is that transactions are up, you know, 50% over the prior year. And there were areas that did improve. Let's go ahead and jump to the next spot. If you're looking at 395 while, while the cursor moves, you'll notice there's a criteria condition, cause and effect, recommendation and management response. So if you're reading any of these findings, the condition is predominantly the finding area. And the management response is basically management's response, what they plan to do going forward. But, but this page right here is kind of a summary of the most of the findings. It's where we list the prior year findings. And the first, the first 10 of them are repeat findings. The, the last finding, number 11, on graduating class accounts went away, was resolved, corrected. But there were two new findings which are in the report as finding number 11 and finding number 12. While, while these, majority of these are repeated, and it's fine to stay on that page. While the majority of these are repeated, one thing that's important to note is that for a finding to go away, it means that all 90 schools pretty much have to be in compliance with the requirement. And some of these would be near impossible to be completely in, in compliance with, for instance, segregation of duties. The only way to resolve that would be to hire a couple more people at each school or hire significantly. or hire a significant number of personnel in Central Office to be able to handle segregating different responsibilities for collecting and dispersing monies. So there's a give and take there. Dispersment, findings number three, four, and five on there, dispersments, receipts, purchase orders. Actually, the findings in these three areas went down for this year compared to last year with the increase in activity. That's a really good accomplishment. So there have been processes in place to where these three finding areas are improving. A new finding this year are there were certain funds that were receded, were not receded, excuse me, that were finding number 11 for this year that were, that were not receded in the books or basically collected and not put directly into the school's bank account. And that's something we're going to be working on this year, and I know there's new procedures in place. But keep in mind, you have teachers collecting money, you have school support organizations collecting money, and sometimes the money needs to go directly into the school account instead of to an SSO or to, you know, the ease of making payments. You could pay a teacher by, with a Venmo account, but really can't do that for, to have the proper segregation of duties in place. So overall, some improvements, some areas that digressed a little bit, but I'd say pretty similar results, except for the fact there's a lot more activity. So that aspect, I would consider encouraging, that the findings did not go up with the activity increasing. I know you haven't had this report very long. I'm more than welcome to answer any questions that you have on it. I'm also more than welcome to come back Thursday night if you want to have any questions there or catch me before the meeting or anything of that nature for any, but I'll be glad to come back Thursday if you would like. But if you have any questions now, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on this report? Okay, I see none.
I guess one last note is I do want to call and appreciate the support that we get from Garrett's staff and also from Ron and Jennifer during the course of our audit. There's a lot of cooperation and as well, there was a lot of oversight and also involvement by management. So I consider that a good sign.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So going into the discussion of our January 12th, 2023 regular agenda, just to note that we will be meeting on Thursday this week and not Wednesday since our new schedule changed. So just a reminder. As communicated via email, items have been added to our January 12th regular session agenda for projects at Hardin Valley Academy and Sequoia Elementary School. These items were unable to be confirmed prior to the holidays but are time sensitive. So Superintendent Iswick and I agreed on their addition. Also, I wanted to let you know the attachments on non-C and 10G were updated. Non-C is consideration of contracts for student telehealth services, and the date terms of the contracts had to be updated due to the use of federal funding. 10G is consideration of our teacher tenure list, and a couple of teachers needed to have their school location updated. We can entertain questions on those items as we review them. So moving into the regular agenda. Consent agenda, six A or B? And C, items and contracts, one or two? Three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions on seven, the newly speaker management. Who can answer those?
Dr. Wilson, please.
Okay. It looks like this was originally a building level in service day. Do we know how much time teachers are going to be away from their building to interact with this speaker?
So this is February 20th?
I think so.
Yeah. So I would imagine since that morning is district wide on the February 20th, is the actual schedule, I believe?
Okay. When I looked, I thought it said the whole day was building wide, but that may just be a mistake.
Let me double check that. I love that data bird. That's good. So I'd say in short, I can find that out for you as far as time.
Okay. And did teachers have input into this choice?
Again, this was a collection between the--
Dr. Wilson, can you speak in your mic?
Yes, I'm sorry. The region one schools are the schools that are listed there in region one have come together to pool their money for this speaker. I can't speak to the teacher input as far as those.
So it depends, it would be a school level--
Yeah.
--whether there was teacher input?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wilson, is, so it's only region one, and you said they pooled monies to be able to bring this particular person in?
So if you look at the fiscal note, West High is covering the cost of it, but to be reimbursed through the PD funds that are available to the other schools. And I said region one, it was lifted up by Danny Trent, as those schools are representative in that region.
Okay. Thank you.
So any other questions on that item? Item eight? Or item nine? Moving into board policy, seven, A or B? C or D? Or item E? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that we brought up the discussion of the public charter school policy at our meetings in December, and we talked about wanting to discuss those. I think I was expecting that they would be brought up at our policy review meeting on Friday, but there's already recommendations. So can we speak to what's driving the recommendations?
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson? Julie Thompson and I had a discussion about this particular policy and the fact that we are about to embark on charter review, charter application review. Matter of fact, we had some training today on that. So the need, I felt the need frankly, to get this before the board sooner as opposed to later, and she did too. And so the changes that you see are aligned with the current law, which is different from when this policy was first promulgated back when, probably roughly 10 years ago when Emerald came onboard.
Thank you. So just a quick note on page three, line 41, there is a typo there, should say charter school instead of chart school. But that can be caught. The, a lot of the conversation that we had at our meeting in December was based on what feedback is the, is the board really giving to the district related to the makeup of the review team? And we had talked about how up until now, the board really hasn't spoken into that or has not been intentional about speaking into that. So I think even if we end up modifying the policy to be able to make it correct more directly to the law, which it needs to, obviously, I think it also would be good for the board to be able to have a more in-depth conversation about the makeup of that team for future, for futures evaluation committees. And also noticed that there is a recommended change to that section on page two, lines 18 through 21. And what it does is it basically makes those, the three community group folks, parent representative, community partner, and other community representatives, as not required. Where it seemed like there was a lot of conversation in our meeting in December about how those are important, and there was, it was expressed by some board members that even the particular folks who make up those is important. So I'm assuming that, I'm wondering what drove that asterisk? Is that because it's not required in law to have those or, I don't know?
That's exactly right. So whatever you see before you as far as the changes are strictly what the law requires and to make it current. But you're right, Mr. Watson. I mean, you know, will this board, I mean, if this board wants to make changes, you know, from here on out, that's great. But again, we felt like that certainly the policy needed to reflect the correct law with us about to embark upon this application review. In the future, the board's free to make whatever policy and reemphasize certain areas or whatever the board feels needs necessary.
Sure. So in line eight there on that second page where it says the committee is now saying reading "may" consist where it said "shall," that's to clarify that the law does actually does not require those particular departments--
That's correct.
--to be represented currently?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question just about timing. Is the committee, would it be set prior to receiving the applications anyway? So that, and the reason for my question, therefore, a specific community member as far as a community area wouldn't necessarily come into play, or is that not the case? Do you understand what I'm saying? As far as timing, the timeline? If we approve, if we approve the committee, that's typically ahead of receiving any applications. Is that the case?
Correct.
So therefore, we wouldn't, if we appointed a parent to that committee, the parent could, would be from any district and not necessarily an area where a school could be proposed?
That's correct. You know, and Ms. Horn, I know that that was the, part of the discussion at the board's last meeting was, you know, should the parent come from, you know, the particular district that's impacted or region that's impacted? Again, that's something that the board can certainly mull over and decide which way you want to go with that. I mean, you know, the committee's already picked, or the board's already approved the committee for this particular cycle. So that, the change to this policy really, I mean, that particular portion would affect the next cycle, okay? Because the committee's already chosen here.
So you'd almost have to make a motion to add someone to the committee? If you had, as a parent representative, let's say we had, somebody was proposing one in District, you know, four, but we didn't have a parent on there from District four, but we wanted one, you'd have to add that person after the fact?
For this cycle, yes. Yes, the board would have to make a specific motion. You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, we wouldn't have the applications when the committee was formed, but we would have letters of intent, right?
Yeah, it's, not necessar, I mean, it just depends upon when the board, you know, approves the committee. I mean, you know, again, I think the practice in the past has been when, when there's some letters of intent that may be expected or applications expected, then a committee's formed. But, you know, the board could approve a committee for each year if it wanted to at a certain time. So it's not, I mean, the law simply requires that the committee be in place before the applications are reviewed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Dupler, the bullet points G through I, where they're asterisk right now and it says "but is not required," that's according to law. But the board could choose to make the policy say they are required, correct?
Yes.
I think based upon the conversation that we had last month, I would recommend that even for this version of the policy, that we don't change that and we leave those as is for now. And if we want to at some point say we don't want those groups represented, but then also I think there's some clarification in the wording that's needed because the sentence that precludes the bullet point list in rows eight and nine says individuals from the following KCS departments, where those last three bullet points are actually not KCS departments. So this should probably be broken into two separate lists. And I think what you could do then is say the committee "may" consist of the individuals from these KCS departments, these six or whatever, and then I would make a second list that then has those three bullet points and say the committee "shall" consist of individuals from those groups, only based on the conversation that we were having. But again, I thought this was going to be discussed at the policy review meeting on Friday. So I'm making, or not Friday, this Friday, but later in the month. So anyway, I just, I think we're, it seems like what's happening in this, even though we're trying to make it represent the law, actually goes against a lot of the conversation that we had in December, is my point, so.
All right. So any other discussion on that item? Okay, so moving on to grants, item 8A. Items B or C? Items D or E? Items F or G? H or I? J or K? So moving on to contracts, items 9A. Item 9B. A, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know that it's, this is probably being driven by the fact that we had the same agenda order every time where contracts are ahead of regular agenda items. But it would seem a little bit odd that we would be asked to vote for the contract for the design of the school prior to voting for the purchase agreement for the land, in terms of order. So it would seem that we just need to reorganize the agenda on that point.
So we can pull that one out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That is noted. Item B. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have quite a few questions, so I may ask some of them and then let some other people ask some. In the, in the terms of the contract, it says that part of this contract is also the original Meriville contract, but I don't see that in the attachments. Can we get a copy of that at some point? Is that available somewhere?
You can absolutely get a copy of the Meriville contract.
Okay, thank you. The other piece that I'm looking at, what it says is that we are approving the contract, but what we have here, we have a contract and then we have, let me see how it's worded, a service agreement. So we, to me, it looks like we have two things. One is a contract and one is a service agreement. In the contract, the language says that the contract is between Knox County Government and the, and Duncan and Sons. In the service agreement, it says that it's between Knox County Schools and Duncan and Sons. And Mr. Dupler has tried to get rid of my concerns here, but I still have them. I am concerned that throughout the contract, it says that it is with Knox County Government. It doesn't say that it's with Knox County Schools. And I don't feel that I have the authority to vote on something that is in Knox County Government and not Knox County Schools. So that's greatly concerning to me, that it doesn't say in the contract that it's specifically a contract with the schools. I understand that it's because this is coming through procurement. However, if, if our item says that we are voting on the contract and the contract says that it's between Knox County Government and the vendor, then I don't feel that's in our purview. So that's a concern to me. So outside of the, I have other contract questions, but I'm not going to look at those right now. My larger concern is that I feel like we have put ourselves in the position of not having custodians. And it's a many-year process that it's-- And it's a many-year process that it's happened over. In the, in the 90s, we had some outsourcing. And then, over time, in our schools, we reduced the number of custodians over and over. And so, what we have is no capacity for when someone is out, there's, there is no slack where someone could pick it up. Because everyone is already stretched ridiculously thin. So, if you're missing a person, then it's, you know, they're already stretched, someone's out for any reason, whether it's sickness or because the position isn't filled. And we just don't have enough positions in our schools to begin with. That's a problem. However, when, when I go out and look for a custodial position, what I find listed is one position in Knox County Schools, and it's listed as being with the Maintenance Department. If I'm a person who lives out west and I'm looking for a position, then I'm not planning to travel all the way down, all the way down here. I'm looking for something that's closer to my zip code. If I do a search, let's say that I say I'm living in Farragut, and I do a search by that zip code, I'm not going to find any custodial positions open in Knox County Schools because they're not listed that way. And so, that's part of the problem, is that our advertising doesn't match what we're looking for. Also, if we go and look at our position openings listed with Knox County, and we go, go to our website and look, positions that we have multiple positions for, they're listed that way. If we need 20 TAs, it says we need 20 TAs. But under custodian, it says one. So, if I'm a custodian looking for a position, and I think there's only one in Knox County Schools, I'm not sure I'm going to apply for that because my chance isn't necessarily that high. The other thing that I see is when I go in to apply for that job, the application is extensive. It's 12 sections of an application process. And I'll bring you guys some screenshots of what that process actually looks like next time. It is lengthy and it's difficult. And even though this is, it's a separate application from that for certified staff, it's still, it's unwieldy. I mean, if you look at it, going through 12 sections, there's a point where somebody's just going to go, "Pfft, no thanks." But the greater problem is that when I go and I look and I search custodial positions, nobody is paying $10.08 an hour. Nobody, anywhere. I couldn't find any custodial positions even close to that lower rate. The lowest rate I could find was $11 an hour, and that's not usual. Generally, what I find is 13 and up. As a bottom, they're starting. So, we can go to any other company and look for a custodial position, and their starting salary is $2 more than in Knox County Schools. That alone, why would you look in Knox County Schools when we're not paying a competitive salary at all? Every time we've looked at hiring administrative positions, we've talked about the necessity of paying a reasonable wage to get someone qualified. But when we talk about our custodial positions, what I hear is, "Oh, we can't afford to do that." Baloney. If we want to do that, we can do that. So, looking at the amount of money that we have, we have 382 custodial positions, and if they're working 255 days at eight hours, we could give each of them a dollar raise for $779,000, far less than this contract. If we have 382 custodians at 255 days, eight hours per day, we could still come in under the cost of this contract if we paid them $1.33 more per hour, all year. That's for all year. This contract is for five months. That's ridiculous. Looking at the custodians we actually have from what we got last month, 301 positions are filled, 81 are unfilled. If we took the money that we have looking at for this contract, we could give all of our 301 custodians a $1,500 bonus per semester and have a $1,500 signing bonus for 81 more positions to attract people to come in and take those positions. Looking at giving this to another company doesn't make sense to me, when we could be taking care of this ourselves. It doesn't make sense to me that we assume another company can go out and hire these positions when we can't. They can go hire these positions because they're paying them more. If we were paying them more, we wouldn't have to be looking at this contract. Thank you.
Mr. Dupler, would you like to speak to that concern? I know the Law Department reviewed these contracts. We discussed in the agenda set meeting, but just for clarification...
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I can speak to the, to the contract concern, certainly. So, what you see, what the board sees before it is, is basically a standard form that comes from Knox County Procurement. They do use the term Knox County Government as a, as a generic term, basically. What that means is that any, any division of Knox County Government, which would include the Board of Education, can use this contract. So, that's why they use that type of language. It's upfront because, because it is the main contract. I mean, so, so whenever you have a contract and it includes numerous documents, all the documents are part of the contract. So, there is a service agreement, as Ms. Owen talked about, that came from Duncan and Sons. But that's what I would call, it, it's, it's of lower priority. I mean, it's part of the contract, but, 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 but the, but the top priority is the, the contract language from procurement, which, which best protects the county. So, so the contract itself is, is in proper form and, and, and does a good job of protecting both the board and the county. And, and when the board votes on it, obviously, the board is only saying that, that's, that, that it's conferring its, its approval or disapproval. And then, and then commission would then say, "Okay, well, there's money in the budget," or, "There's not." And that's all the commission would say about it. As far as, as, as needing the Meriville contract, I appreciate Dr. Adams saying that he'll provide that because that is part of the contract, because it's, it's, it's what we call a piggyback. So, so, I mean, that would set the term, really, is what, the five months that Ms. Owen talked about. So, so that's it from the legal standpoint, and that's...
So, the Law Department doesn't have any concerns?
No. No, no, not, not from a legal standpoint. I mean, yeah.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I wanted to see if Dr. Adams would speak first to some of the current concerns that Ms. Owen's raised.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Ms. Owen, I appreciate your sentiments, and I agree with you 100% that our custodians do need to be appropriately compensated. I do want to clarify a few things. Currently, they're, they're, they start at $10.89. So, when we looked, we did look at a raise, what it would look like, and of course, it's, it's, we would start with the, the beginning salary, and we would look, the trickle-down effect to our veteran custodians, and it was to the tune of about 1.4 million. I also wanted to address the why, right? And, and, and basically, the why is our custodians are struggling. When we met with every one of our custodians, I had some in-depth conversation, and they basically said, "Dr. Adams, we are struggling. We need help." So, this is not, and by any stretch of the imagination, a replacement. This is to get our custodians help. Currently, we have 392 vacancies, and, 300, excuse me, 392 positions, we have 83 vacancies. Keep in mind, we started the school year with 89 vacancies. We dropped down to 79 vacancies, and we're already right back up to 83 vacancies. We have several custodians, and, and, if Ms. Hall would like to speak to this, we have several custodians who have recently retired because they're exhausted. A lot of our custodians would, would use overtime for supplemental in, income, and they, they simply don't want it anymore because they are exhausted. The custodians we spoke to, and I had one-on-one conversations when I met with them, they are very appreciative of this opportunity because it helps them get through the year. And I can't imagine cleaning a building to exhaustion, and you come back to the same building the next day and, and you're right back to square one. So, they certainly understand and appreciate the fact that they are going to get help to finish out this school year as we figure out how we compensate our custodians and, and do a better job of recruitment and retention. I will say this, the conversation I did have with our custodians, yes, you do have contractors and, and, and local businesses that pay more. However, our veteran custodians have expressed that the benefits that Knox County Schools provide, there's nothing even close. If you even look at the 12% increase for some of our custodians, they're here for the benefits, as far as the retirement benefits and so forth. Now, if we could do the compensation as well, I'm 100% on board with that. But the understanding is, of a lot of these contractors, they will pay our custodians $2 more on the hour, and then, before you know it, they're, they're dismissed from their duties because they, they fill a contract and they, and they move on. So, those are the conversations that I had with our custodians, the one-on-one conversations. And, and they did echo that, even though they are appreciative of, of the benefits, like, of course, they would like more compensation. So, it, it, it's more complex than just pay our custodians more, which, once again, I'm all in favor for. But, but a lot of our custodians, when you look at the competition, you know, a lot of our custodians are looking at those benefits, and they are appreciative of Knox County Schools' benefits. So, currently, our, our biggest problem is hiring and retaining our custodians. And so, you know, having a, a staff of, of only 83 vacancies, I know that sounds significant, but when you look at the number of employees we have that are custodians, we have a healthy group that we just, right now, need to provide them some support. And I'm not looking at this as being a long-term solution by any stretch of imagination, but I truly believe that we need to support our custodians and give them the help they need to finish out the school year.
Thank you. Dr. Adams?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Adams. And I do appreciate you reaching out to custodians. I know that you've also been in different buildings and talking to principals and others. And the reality is, this, the challenge that we have right now just does, does not just affect our custodians, it also affects our end users in terms of our students and our faculty and others. And so, I think there is a challenge there. I also agree with Ms. Owen that this challenge has been created over many years. And it's also been created over big market shifts, just nationally, over the last couple of years with the economy. And, I mean, there's, there's people that are making money in retail that would have never thought they would have made that money in retail right now, right? I do think there's a narrative that's going around that I think it's important to correct with the public, and that is, they see the number of $24 an hour in this contract, and there's the perception that the custodians with Duncan and Sons are going to be making $24 an hour. And that's not true. You have to take off profit for that, you have to take off whatever benefit percentage they take out of that number, any potential retirement or any things like that. So, I don't know that we know exactly what those custodians will make, but it's certainly less than $24 an hour. And I think it's also important, then, to make sure that we're thinking about what we add back in, in terms of benefits. So, the number that keeps going around in emails is we pay $10.89 an hour per custodian, which is the starting rate, base rate. But, when you add back in benefits, even at that base rate, they're making $15.83 when you add back in, and I appreciate Scott running some numbers for me today, when you add back in the benefits, that's more where they are. So, I think it's pretty hard for us as a board, or even the general public, to make an apples-to-apples comparison between what Duncan and Sons folks might be getting versus what our folks are getting. And I think it's also important, what you articulated, that there are people who value benefits over compensation versus time off. There's a lot of things that go into making those decisions. But I do think, and I agree with Ms. Owen and, and you, that we do need to figure out how to make a significant bump in what we're doing. And I also know that then, then trickles down to other categories of employee that we have, right? It's not, there's not just a challenge with our custodians, that's who we're talking about tonight. But that challenge goes into other places. So, I would hope that when we see a budget proposal coming up for this school year, that, you know, we'll see some work done on that. And if you want to speak anymore now to what kind of steps are, is your department taking to help address the long-term problem, I think it's, it's great to put some of that out there.
Did you want to... Reverend Butler?
I'd like to, for me to speak to that at this point because that was part of my comment.
Okay. Dr. Adams, did you have something you wanted to?
Yes, I just wanted to add one other thing to Ms. Owen's concerns, and, and her, her concerns are very valid. And, and we looked at a lot of the things she had mentioned. We did look at, before I took this position, Knox County Schools did list positions for custodians by school, and, and it didn't fare well. What I do know, excuse me, Ms. Hall has done an exceptional job of getting people in and then selling people on schools, right? Because it, it, when we narrow it down to particular areas, we lose custodians. And so, getting them in the building and then providing them with alternatives such as transportation or multiple schools, we, we found that to be very effective. I will say Brett Foster has piloted the bilocation with food services, and it has not been successful this year. And so, she's looking to go back to more of a general posting and, and get people in and have that conversation. The other piece to that is, we do have people who come onsite, and Ms. Hall and her team work directly with those applicants to, to ensure that they can apply and help them with the online process to ensure that they have the help that they need.
Thank you.
So, my concerns have already been somewhat addressed or spoken to. One would be having temp workers, if you will, coming in and making more than those who are your regular custodians. And I understand that with the benefits package, and if you add out all that together, then it may balance itself out. But, but that is a concern when I look and see that you're going to, not just that you're paying the company $24,000, I mean, $24 an hour, but that the workers who come in, working side by side, the temp workers generally, you don't expect for them to make more than those who are already there, those who are the veterans of the buildings. And the second thing is, is that I'd like to hear a, what is the long-range solution? What, what's the end game? How do we move forward? And I know, I'm hearing we didn't get here overnight, so we may not, you know, be out of it in the morning, but we still should be making some progress. So, what is that, that long-term plan? What kind of thoughts do we have in terms of plans, do we have in terms of, of moving us away from this? One of those would be, I'm sure, raising, raising the pay.
Dr. Ryswick, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, Dr. Adams, I'll let you jump in for a second. I, I just want to say a couple of things to this and to answer your question, Mr. Butler. I, I want to say again, because I think it needs to be said, we're committed to our employees. We're committed to our custodians and, and as, as part of the family, we said a lot of that last month, but lots happened since last month, just want everybody to understand that, that that's our ultimate goal. While this temporary contract, if you all choose to vote it in, is in place, we still will be continuing to hire full-time custodians who want to come work for us, and encourage that. I think, you know, we're, we're in a tough place. I will say this too, same thing that has been said multiple times, I think we, we do. We, you know, this board, over the last two years, has done a 16% increase in custodian salaries, and I think, you know, our plan will be, again, I'll leave that to Ron and the guys crunching numbers, but to bring you guys something for this upcoming budget that continues to work on that compensation. But I want to answer your, your question honestly. We don't know that we have the solution, Mr. Butler. Like, we don't know that it's just this. We definitely think increasing salaries, I mean, that seems to be what we do in education across the board, and thinking that, that that's always going to work, but it, it doesn't always. So, what I know as a superintendent, that the challenge that we have in, in, in a lot of these schools, and I can think of some of them from up to a year to 18 months ago, that were begging for help, those principals calling us and, and asking us what else can be done. So, you know, we're, we're at this current place, having to weigh, how do we get school, as Mr. Watson said, clean for, for teachers and students, when teachers shouldn't be emptying trashcans and cleaning tables and doing those kinds of things on a regular basis? Everybody jumps in and pitches in when they can, we get that. But that's not, you know, we need them teaching students and being focused on that. So, I think this is one way for us to look at that, to hope that this, as, as Dr. Adams said, to provide some relief for our current custodians and try to help with that load. I hope that part of the answer is increased compensation for these positions, but I don't know that. I mean, we see the same signs when, when, when we drive through our neighborhoods at Starbucks and Target are hiring for $16 an hour, and I assume if those signs are there, they have vacancies, right? So, I, I don't know what that magic number is or what that thing looks like. We'll continue to try those. And I think what you see in this contract is our attempt to keep schools clean with another effort, but ultimately, we want it to be Knox County employees. And so, our hope, we hope it's a temporary fix, and but, but we'll continue to try because we have that obligation. a temporary fix, and but we'll continue to try because we have that obligation for teachers and for students to keep schools clean. So again, we hope that this helps in the immediate, that we can get schools back to where they need to be. And hopefully, again, compensation and things work for the future as well. Dr. Adams, I don't know if you were going to add to that. I'll probably jump in front of you.
I was just going to ask Ms. Hall to, she can provide you all with some additional information, or if there are any additional questions you all have, she can certainly give you some history and definitely where we're moving forward.
Okay. I'm here for any questions you may have. I'll try to give you the best answer that I can. We struggled for a long time. I've been here in this position for about 10 years. And when I first came, we had almost a full staff. We had about 375 custodians. And looking back, on those days, I would long for those days, because we've had so many openings. We have done everything that I can possibly think of, that I got, that, we've done some crazy ideas, trying to get people to apply, trying to get people to work, trying to get people to schools. And you are right, completely right, Ms. Owen. I feel like, long-term, we probably need to look at trying to increase our custodial pay, but that is not where we are right at the moment. Where we are right at the moment is we have lots of tired, worn-out, I would say, custodians. And we're not making progress, we're continuing to lose ground every day. I'm surprised, honestly, that we've made it halfway through the school year to this point, and not in worse shape than we are. In talking with the principals of the 17 schools that we've proposed, it was 110% positive feedback, very few questions, very, I don't remember, Dr. Adams, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember a single concern from any of those principals. They welcome the help, not just to have clean buildings, but to help those folks that are in those schools right now. I'll use Harden Valley Academy as an example. We have eight positions there. We need eight people there to keep that building to our KCS cleaning standards. It takes eight people running on all cylinders to make that happen. We have three people. We have had three people there. It's the same three people there for this entire school year, through the summer even. Now, we pull from different schools and various, various places, with our Dream Teams and Robin Peter to Pay Paul, so to speak, with some of our other schools. But long-term, it's, it's just not going to work. And so, we've, we've been talking about this since school started. What can we do? We offered a sign-on bonus through the school year last year. I would have to get with compensation to get the exact numbers, but I'm guessing we hired about 60 people that we gave a sign-on bonus. We gave that bonus to them in two payments. After their first 30 days, we gave them the first half of the bonus. After their 90 days, we gave them the second half. I would guess, and I think I'm going to make a pretty good guess, that half of those didn't, didn't make it the 90 days, or we ended up taking most of them back, because they didn't fulfill the requirements to keep the sign-on bonus. We elected not to do that this year because compensation was, was just overwhelmed with the accounting of it. I'm trying to think what else we have done. For the last two years, we've been, we've been very diligent about when we speak with our applicants, finding out if they have verifiable cleaning experience. If they do, we have submitted that through Dr. Adams to HR to get that approved, to give them up to five years' experience. So right now, if a custodian comes in and they have five, at least five years' experience, we send a memo and start that custodian out on step five versus step zero. So that has helped retain some of our, our more experienced applicants that we get. But the bottom line is, we don't have an applicant pool. And for these 17 schools, there's a couple of them that, that we're just struggling with right now, for whatever reason. But most of them are, are struggling because we don't have applicants that live in that area and that can afford transportation to Fairget, Harden Valley, Bearden Middle, some of those places. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And I will piggyback on what you said. I've not only heard from the administrators, I've heard from parents and teachers at some of these schools that are really impacted by this, and they're desperate for immediate, because they are tired and exhausted and, you know, need help now. So it looks like, Ms. Pike, you were next, and then Mr. McMillan.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious to kind of piggyback off of Ms. Owen's, talking about the 12-page application, and just kind of what has been done to kind of make that application process a little bit easier, what you've tried?
Sure. Anytime someone reaches out via email, phone call, text message, or even through, through a current employee, we encourage that applicant to come to our office. We have a computer set up. We have, we always have someone there during our normal office hours to sit down either with them, help get them online and get that process started. We help them to the, to whatever extent they need help to get that completed.
Is anything like that listed in kind of like the job posting? Because I could definitely say, I mean, even for myself in applying for a job, if it's pages and pages and pages, it's going to be discouraging. And knowing that I could just email and maybe have someone help me through it, is that?
It's not current, to my knowledge, it's not currently part of.
Ms. Himmelgarn, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, that's, that's not something that's currently in the posting, but we can explore opportunities to add information like that.
And then, as you talked about, that there just isn't an applicant pool, is that, was it the same last year, or is the pool even lower this year?
I just want to specify, I believe what Ms. Hall is referring to is an applicant pool in those areas. And historically, there has, there has always been a struggle in those areas as far as the applicant pool.
Okay.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. I don't disagree with much of anything, if anything, that's been said. But if you raise, and I think I've been as supportive of custodians, y'all have not been here, but in the time I've been here, I've been as supportive as most anybody. Because, back probably 12 years ago, they were going to, the then superintendent was going to contract out and had the votes to do them, until the present city mayor and myself, and I don't say this to toot my own horn, I just say it for reference, but that put a stop to that. And I, I still run into people occasionally that thank me for, for that. So they do remember. But I'll, I'll support raising whatever you can raise, an hour, I mean, a dollar an hour, $2, $3, whatever, within reason. But I think that it's more the federal government today has conditioned people where they can get by without working. They could, they get money somehow or another. And I would dare say that if you, if you offered an increase of $2 an hour, you probably wouldn't have more than 20% increase if you had that. Because they just, you know, the ones that are, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the ones that are working, do a good job, when they see, they kind of get in a rhythm after a while, and, and they're comfortable working for Knox County with the benefits. Now, this is just my observation. And it is a better, less-pressure place to work than a lot of other places are. So they stay. But some of these people that you hire, why, you know, they would, they probably wouldn't, as my grandmother used to say, they probably wouldn't work by a factor. But they, they just, it is a problem, and it's been a problem for a good number of years. So I don't know what, as far as providing rides and stuff, it makes a little sense if somebody lives downtown or in the downtown area, and they would have to drive to Fairget or Harden Valley, they'd run out the gas for half of what they, at least half of what they earn for going down there for hours or whatever. So I think, I think that's a good, good thing. It is just a temporary thing. And hopefully, the situation will get better. And when, when some of these people see and they, they feel more comfortable working, because like I say, from what I've seen, they, they tend to get in the groove and they want to stay or else they move out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. And I think Ms. Horn, you were next, and then Mr. Triplet. But before that, I would just like to remind everyone in attendance tonight that if you need to speak to the person beside you, please step outside. We certainly don't want to ask anyone to leave, but it is very distracting when we can hear noise from the audience and we're trying to hear other board members speak. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you, Ms. Hall, for, for supporting our custodians. I know you, I can only imagine how difficult your job is, and I appreciate your support of them and how hard they work. And I know many of our custodians are longtime employees, and I appreciate Dr. Adams speaking with many of them also. This issue has been, well, and to the point about salaries, I've asked a couple of times about this salary review that the district is, is conducting, because I definitely think that we need to look at the overall salaries, not only of this, but also of nutrition and bookkeeping and several of the, of the areas, TAs. So I'm interested to see that, and also, when we get to the budget cycle, how, what we, what we need to do. I'm leery of doing anything outside of that budget cycle, because I think we need to look at the big picture and look at everything together. This issue has been a primary issue in my schools for well over a year now. So out of my five schools, four of my schools are significantly impacted, which Ms. Hall knows very well. And I appreciate that you've tried to get, get people there if they're willing to work. So thank you for all of that help. So my, my principals just, they need their schools to be cleaned. And the custodians that we have there are, as has already been said, are overworked, and they need help. So I appreciate the district looking for some way to fix this. This contract is, I don't remember what the start date is, but, but through June. So this is certainly not a long-term contract. It's for a handful of months to fix an issue that has a problem right now. I don't have a lot of confidence that if we raise the salary right now, that we would get applicants, because of what Dr. Reiswick said. There are help-wanted signs everywhere you go. And I appreciate Mr. Watson bringing up the benefits and, and Dr. Adams' explanation about the benefits, because I think that does help us get an overall picture that, that, I don't know what the, what the breakdown is, but that there are a lot more people who are making more than $10 an hour. And when you factor in the benefits, it's significantly more. So my schools need help. That's the bottom line. The schools, there's no way that at Fairget High School, that three, it's either two or three janitors can clean the school. It's just not possible. So we have massive amounts of people in these buildings every single day. That's a lot of people to clean up after. So we need help in the schools. And so, I wish we had done this last month, because my schools need help today. So that, I will be voting for this, and I'm thankful for it.
Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, again, I do appreciate, echo what Ms. Horn said about, appreciate your support of our custodians. If you have been in business in any way involved in the recruitment, hiring and retention of employees in the last couple of years, that's been a challenge, specifically some entry-level positions. And you are looking for any avenue you can to find employees, find an applicant pool to, to draw from. And, and you've got hard-working employees who are doing the very best they can that are exhausted. And so, I applaud you finding a, a solution. And certainly, we'll be voting for it as well, giving some relief to our current custodians and kind of a stopgap measure. I agree, we, you know, salary and benefits, and there may be some things we can look at. We get to do that in the budget cycle, and we can look through that big picture and see if there is a way we can make that happen, which I think everyone would, would love to see that happen. So, but I just appreciate you all finding a, a solution to support the custodians that, that need to help right now.
Thank you. Ms. Henderson, I don't think we've heard from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't agree more with Ms. Horn and Mr. Triplet. I completely agree with everything you said. And thank you, Ms. Hall, for all you do. I know it has not been an easy road, so know that you are appreciated. And Dr. Adams, thank you so much for going to those schools, talking to the custodians. I have several schools that are greatly impacted as well. I get pictures from teachers of the conditions in the school right now, and it's affecting our custodians, but it's also affecting our teachers. Our teachers are suffering, they're having to clean these rooms when they should be educating our children. And our teachers are asking for help. And so, I appreciate you guys thinking outside of the box and getting the teachers, custodians, and our kids the help that they need now. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This first thing that I'm going to say doesn't help us at all, but I want to put it out there, because I think it's important for the board to know. It just makes me mad, and I think you need to know. Year before last, we had a couple of elected officials, some parents, and some former students who were, we keep talking about begging for help, they were begging to volunteer in our schools. They wanted to form groups to go into our schools and help our custodians after hours with, you know, the minor things that they could help with, so custodians could do the main part of their job. And our, our person who was in operations at the time refused that offer because he said that the background checks would be too, too difficult and overwhelming, even though we have a system in place for volunteers to come into our schools for all kinds of things. That was the issue. We, Knox County Schools, decided that instead of having some elected officials and some parents organize people to come and help for nothing, we would rather say no than do the background checks necessary. So that's just something that's been on my mind for a while. So nothing we can do about that at this point, but I just wanted you to know. So we keep talking about the inability to find workers, but we expect Duncan &amp; Sons to go hire 50. If they can hire 50 right now, we should be able to hire 50 right now. It doesn't make sense to me that we can contract with a company who can do this, but we can't do it ourselves. However, it does make sense to me when I look at the advertising. If you'll go and search for a custodial job, go and find what Duncan &amp; Sons has listed, go and find what we have listed. First off, we have $10.08 listed as our bottom salary. If we're paying $10.89, it needs to say $10.89. It shouldn't say $10.08. When I look at the advertising for Duncan &amp; Sons, it lists the benefits of coming to work for us. Hey, come work for us, it's great. When I look at ours, it's basically a list of these horrible things you're going to have to do. Here, here are your job responsibilities, by golly. And it's, it's not something that makes you really want to jump up and, and apply for that. Um, we've talked about all these options that we're providing, and I appreciate that we're looking for ways to help people, but we're doing it after they apply. We need to be bringing in the applicants. So, these are things that if people knew on the front end, maybe we would have more applicants, so that we could offer these things. Being able to offer them transportation, being able to offer different buildings, that's great. But if they don't know that before they come to us, then we may never see them at all. Back to our background checks. Will Duncan &amp; Sons use the same background checks we do, or are they only the background checks listed in their contract?
No, they, they will use the exact same, uh, background checks that is accordance with Knox County Schools.
Okay. Thank you. And my, my last question that I'm going to ask tonight, there, it seems to me to be a conflict between the service agreement and the contract. And if you look at item 19 in the contract, and item 3 in the service agreement, item 19, um, basically, it's talking about problems, if we have problems, if we need to terminate the contract, that kind of thing. Item 19 says, "We shall endeavor to rectify the problem within 72 hours. And if the same problems or other problems persist or recur, the county may terminate the contract on 30 calendar days written notice." So, that's in 19 in the contract. But when we look at the service agreement under termination, it says, um, "If a contractor shall fail to substantially correct the deficiencies within 30 days, then we have another 30 days to terminate the contract." So, in one, it's looking at 72 hours to correct the problems. In the other, it's looking at 30 days to correct the problems. So, I, I think we need to, to find some kind of agreement in there.
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, uh, item 19 in the, um, in the main contract takes precedence. So, any, any conflict in the service agreement would be overruled by, uh, the main language in, uh, the contract. So, it would be 72 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. Ms. Owen, did you have anything else? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, uh, one question and two comments. Uh, and Ms. Hall, thank you too. I appreciate you being here and speaking on behalf of our custodians and all the work that they do. And, um, I know it's not a job that I would want, especially in those conditions of being just, um, outgunned, right? There's just not nearly enough people there. Uh, Dr. Adams, um, how confident are we that Duncan &amp; Sons can fulfill the contract? Do they need to hire 50 new employees? Um, do they have a base to start with? I mean, what's our confidence level?
Uh, for, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hall, but they have a base. They have assured us that they will be able to have employees, uh, on February the 1st, um, if, if the proposed contract is approved, and they will be ready to start and go and have all schools serviced.
So, in terms of the total number needed based on the contract, they would be able to start with that number on the 1st?
That is correct.
That's what they've guaranteed us?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so then, my guess is, I, I mean, I don't know how important this is, but they're probably not going out and hiring 50 new people. They're, they're probably fulfilling this with some of their current personnel, in, from your understanding.
That, from my understanding, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So then, uh, two comments. One is, I just want to be clear, and I think I'm right on this, is that, that what we're proposing, the monies we're using, or proposing to pay for this contract is savings from unfulfilled positions with custodians that just have not been fulfilled, correct? So, we're not affecting the budget?
Absolutely. And it is budget neutral.
Budget neutral. And then, Ms. Himmelgarn and, um, Ms. Horn referenced it earlier, and I appreciate you doing that. Would you speak just a moment to the salary study? Because I think that's important, and I think we've already kind of gotten some bids on that. But it, it will not just impact custodians. I mean, it, from my understanding, the, the study will actually be about our salaries across the board. And then, if you would just speak, um, why are we doing this study? What's the objective? So...
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, thank you. Yes, the salary study is looking at all of our positions, so both certified positions and classified positions, the salary schedules. We are, are doing it as, we haven't had one, um, in a long time.
Twenty years, right?
Right. Um, so, we are doing it to have a, a third party that's an expert review our salary schedules to see if we are paying our, our employees at market value comparative to other positions in, in the field of, of whatever position it is. Um, we do anticipate a report telling us that, that we can then use to make recommendations in the budget for FY '25. So, those would be separate from any recommendations that we may bring for FY '24 in this budget cycle.
Okay. Well, I just want to commend the Central Office on doing that. I mean, every business has to do that every once in a while, to be able to stay within the market, and like we've already commented, there's been so many changes nationally. So, I appreciate you all doing that and looking forward to seeing some of the recommendations. And I think because of that, it does make sense to hold back just a little bit to make these adjustments based on good data, um, instead of just, um, doing it, not, it's not out of a sense of reaction, but, but trying to do it, um, too quickly. So, thank you.
Ms. Spine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to echo what everyone else said, that I'm so thankful for everyone that's working really hard on this. Um, and I've got a few questions, and I'm not really sure exactly who they should go to, but it piggybacks a little bit off of, um, Ms. Owen. The, in the contract, you know, I see the schools listed and the numbers and all of that stuff, but is there, like, a definitive guarantee that we are being given by putting this money out to say that, like, absolutely, yes, this is going to be done? And I understand that there's that 72-hour thing, but who's going to oversee that?
So, our head custodian, uh, our head custo, they will, they will report to our head custodian, but we also have onsite and area site managers for, for Duncan &amp; Sons. So, you'll have several eyes, um, on, uh, the work that's being done within the school and, but our head custodian, they are, they are the ones that will report to Ms. Hall, or, um, uh, they will work directly with the onsite manager or the, the area site manager.
Okay. And then, um, the background checks. So, it's the same company doing it, but, um, is it that company that will house the background checks, or will Knox County Schools also get the copy of those?
Madam Chair, Ms. Spine, Mr. Dupler, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the results from the TBI background check would come to Knox County Schools for approval.
Yes, that's correct. And it's set, and it's set by statute in the, uh, even the service agreement talks about the, the statute that, that refers to the requirement. When, when you're in education, it has to be a fingerprint FBI background check.
Ms. Owen?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question's been answered.
So, do we have any other? Reverend Butler?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank, uh, all those involved, Dr. Adams, Ms. Hall, and for the efforts. So, this contract goes through June 2023. Uh, what are the, are there any plans following, and I, I would call these mid-range plans?
Madam Chair, uh, Dr. Butler, that's an excellent question. Uh, what we're currently doing is, as we continue to recruit, uh, we're working very closely with Dr. Himmelgarn's team and, and job fairs and, and whatnot. So, we're, we're, we're going to actively recruit, uh, and then we will reassess where we are. Uh, and if we look at continuing on, it would, it, what it would look like is a semester contract, right? It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it would not be an annual contract. Uh, so, if we're in the same position this summer, then we would look at a semester contract, schools of need, uh, and then we will continue to actively recruit. Uh, once again, I've got all the confidence in the world, and Dr. Himmelgarn's team, uh, they've worked, uh, very closely with our team as far as recruitment, uh, and so we're going to continue to do that. I think we'll be in a better place, uh, this, at the close of this school year, uh, but we do have some plans in place as well.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm, I'm, thank you for mentioning the June date. Um, June and July are the hardest and heaviest times for our custodians. And I think if I were a custodian and I finally got help, and then it left between June and July, I think I would just sit on the floor and cry. So, that seems like not the most opportune time to end that contract.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Owen, no, that is an excellent point. I will tell you, uh, and this is not a great answer, but we made it happen this school year. I mean, that's, that's how we started this school year, with 89 vacancies. Uh, our, our hope is that once we get, once we get to that point, we can fast-track, um, some of the things that we normally do, waxing the floors and so forth. And so, we'll be proactive in ensuring that those particular schools are ready. Uh, like I said, it's not a great answer. Uh, hopefully, uh, we'll have some, some of those positions filled, and we'll have, uh, we'll concentrate our focus on those areas to get those positions filled, uh, and we'll just be proactive moving forward. But that's an, that's an excellent point, and we did discuss that.
Thank you, Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Again, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
All right. So, moving on in items in contracts, item C. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if anybody noticed it, but I am listed as a reference on the Harmony Family Center contract. Uh, that is because in my role as the Executive Director of the Restoration House, the Restoration House does contract with Harmony Family Center. Um, I didn't know they were going to list me as a reference. My assumption is I'm probably one of a whole host of references that they put on all kinds of contracts. Um, so, I have not discussed this contract with anybody within Knox County Schools. Um, and we actually have never used Harmony Family Center for telehealth services. Um, we've used them for other therapeutic services for kids, but I think I can still vote on it, um, objectively, but just want to make that known, so...
Thank you for disclosing that. Um, item D. All right. So, moving on, Mr. Watson?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I know, um, for, for those who have, um, been engaged in the community and been engaged in our, um, the work around the DEO and around the Alliance for Educational Equity, I know the Institute for, uh, International Institute for Restorative Practices has been a topic of conversation in the community for a long time. And I, to my knowledge, I think this is the first time that the school system may be contracting directly with them. I was wondering if, is Ms. Cook here? Uh, Ms. Cook, could you speak to just the contract and, um, what we already do with restorative practices, and then how this will, um, aid us in the work that we're doing with restorative practices?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, we have restorative practices in Knox County Schools. We've had restorative practices for a number of years. Um, specifically, over the past four years, we have put an emphasis on providing restorative practices in our middle and high school. Jeff Wright and some of his team members have been trained in the past, um, to utilize restorative practices, and he has been instrumental in leading the work in the district. Um, as we move forward, and as we, as I came into this position, the DEO had, um, kind of, and some community groups had asked us to look at more, um, work with, and more collaboration with the Institute, uh, the International Institute of Restorative Practices. In fact, before I spoke at the first board meeting ever, I had been in Kentucky that day and rushed back to talk at the board meeting. So, that was how long ago it was. So, this contract is kind of the culmination of a lot of years of collaboration and conversation, um, with them, with community agencies, and with ourselves. The problem that we have in Knox County is that our regions are so diverse, and we can't have a one-size-fits-all. So, um, and that was kind of a push was, we need to have everybody do the same thing. We do not need everybody in Knox County to do the same thing, because we have different needs in different schools. So, as we look to have, um, some of the, you know, come up with what kind of plan could we have with IRP, they actually came in and they met with, um, Mr. Thomas and myself, and they met with the community group, and they actually looked at all the work we had done. And they kind of agreed with me was, in Knox County, we had done a lot of work in Knox County, and we needed to kind of move on to the second phase. They typically come in and do, like, first-phase work in schools, districts. We needed to move on and do more, um, work that was individualized for schools and more specifically, um, focused. So, that's kind of what we look at this contract that we have. We're looking to highlight and work in five schools specifically to give them support. Each school may look something different. We will come in, and the IRP will come in and work with the schools. They'll help train the staff. They'll support the staff. They will work to create their restorative practices, um, implementation within their schools. So, it's, we need to make sure that everybody understands, this is not our get-out-of-jail-free card for children who don't behave. This is high accountability with high expectations and supports. You know, we have to support our kids. We talk about when our kids, we need, that we need to teach them the skills, but it's based on relationships. Restoration has to be built on relationships. So, we help staff work on how do you build relationships with children, so that when we get to the point that there is an issue, then we have something to restore back to. So, it's, um, it's work that, as I said, in schools, different schools, it will look slightly different, but it will have that framework of individuals, um, what the, the school needs, based on building relationships, holding children accountable, but providing the support they need to make good decisions, and work out how can things go wrong and they make poor decisions? How do we get back on the right track? You know, you're not just left at the side of the road. We want to help you learn how to get back on track, so that you can move forward and be, uh, productive, um, be productive in your education.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. So, this is a two-year contract. Is it five different schools over both years, or is it the same five schools over both years?
Same five schools.
Same five schools over, so, a total schools impacted would be five over the to, over the two-year period?
The intensive work. We do restorative practices in all these.
Correct. Yeah, but in terms of this contract and the way it'll be leveraged?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then, well, you mentioned that the primary focus up till now has been in middle school and high school. Are all of these schools within those particular grade bands, or are these elementary schools? What's?
We have three elementary schools in this group.
Okay. So, will this be the first time that we're leveraging restorative practices in elementary schools?
I think so, yes. So, we do a lot of the restorative work.
Sure.
We probably just don't name it as restorative practices in the same way as we do in middle and high school. But it's all about building relationships. PBIS is about building relationships. The PAC Classroom is about building relationships and teaching the skill of what do you do when something goes wrong? And, you know, it's, it's just a different level, so, um, it's, it's not being identified specifically like that.
I, I didn't see it in the contract, but afterward, can you send the list of the particular schools to the board? I don't think they're in the contract, which schools are.
They're not in the contract, but they're on your, um, they're on your fiscal note.
They're in the what?
The fiscal note.
Oh, I didn't see that. I didn't see in the fiscal note. I'll, I'll reference it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cook. So, any other discussion on that item? All right. Moving on to regular agenda items, we have item 10A. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, on this item, I've asked Dr. Reiswick to look at some additional, uh, properties, and so, I'm not going to be prepared, I don't think I'm going to be pre, prepared to vote on this on Thursday, so I just wanted to let the board, board members, give the board members a head, heads up on that.
So, are, are we deferring this? Did you want to?
Well, so, I, I mean, I may on Thursday make, you know, just ask that we defer it, or I'll defer to Dr., I mean, to, um, Mr. Dupler on that.
And I assume that that would go with the other contract, whatever we do with this one, I guess.
Exactly. We would. We would need to change. Yeah, we may need to shift that contract also.
Mr. Dupler, did you want to?
I, I, I would just echo what, what Ms. Horn's saying. Um, you know, we did have a discussion, uh, earlier today, and, um, you know, included Dr. Reiswick and Dr. Adams, and, um, and, and yes, uh, we, you know, we talked about deferring and, and, and that's, um, we've worked further on that, and that's, that seems to be the, the route to take.
Mr. Watson, or did you? Okay. Anyone? All right. So, moving on, item 10B. 10C or D? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in reference to 10D. I know that there was an arrangement put in place several years ago, and this is now just coming to the forefront. Does, can anybody speak to the specific plans that the city has with the Sammy Hill property?
Dr. Adams?
They have not, they've not been very specific on what the plans are. So, we've had those conversations, but I'm not exactly sure, moving forward, what the plans are. I know they had some different ideas they were kicking around. So, we just need to get our things out of there.
Sure. Thank you.
Item 10E. F? G? All right. So, moving on to 10H, which is our legislative priorities. I think Ms. Owen has, thank you, by the way, for preparing these. I know there are two documents here everyone should have, and I'll let you explain what they are. And I also believe there's a couple of documents of board member suggestions as well. Is that correct? I don't know if they're all, I've not went through them all to see if they're all incorporated. Did they? She went to the. Should we wait for them to come back or take? Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are returning to the last item on our agenda, which is our legislative priorities. And Board members, you do have some documents at your seat. Ms. Owen, would you like to?
Sure.
And thank you again for bringing these.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to be sure everybody was back before we started this, so we could look at the suggestions and where I tried to include them. And I will say, I did not include all of the suggestions. I'll try to go through the reasons for that. I also didn't include one of my own suggestions, and I'll give you the reasons for that, too. I tried to take out some superfluous language here and there, like in the first. So if you look at the red line copy that you have, that one should be on top. The other copy you have is the same thing, it's just without the red line. It's more of a final draft version, so it's the same. So I just changed some language there at the beginning to take out some wordiness. Then I put in the language that we used in the resolution and the seven points. What I did not include here is the reference to where those came from, back to the State Board. If we want to put those in, we can, but it makes everything look really squishy. So, you know, we have it in the resolution, but we could put it here if we really want to. The next paragraph, it says, already we had districts must continue to have flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnership with teachers and families. And this is where I tried to incorporate the literacy instruction section and put in including materials for reading and literacy instruction. And that way, that can cover whatever the district needs it to cover there. It can, it still says that we want that flexibility, without being really specific and saying specifically phonics. Then on the next page, the back, this is all under funding. Most of this is just changing from BEP to TISA, so that's what I changed there. What I would like to do here is take out the references with the BEP numbers and the 123 at the bottom that shows where those came from. I feel like we've had these long enough and everybody's used them enough that maybe we don't need those anymore. However, some board members felt really strongly about them last time, so I've left them in until someone says otherwise. Then I added, based on our discussions, increased funding for support staff, such as custodians and teaching assistants. So we may or may not want to keep that in.
All right, so we are returning to the last item on our agenda, which is our legislative priorities. And Board members, you do have some documents at your seat. Ms. Owen, would you like to?
Sure.
And thank you again for bringing these.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to be sure everybody was back before we started this, so we could look at the suggestions and where I tried to include them. And I will say, I did not include all of the suggestions. I'll try to go through the reasons for that. I also didn't include one of my own suggestions, and I'll give you the reasons for that, too. I tried to take out some superfluous language here and there, like in the first. So if you look at the red line copy that you have, that one should be on top. The other copy you have is the same thing, it's just without the red line. It's more of a final draft version, so it's the same. So I just changed some language there at the beginning to take out some wordiness. Then I put in the language that we used in the resolution and the seven points. What I did not include here is the reference to where those came from, back to the State Board. If we want to put those in, we can, but it makes everything look really squishy. So, you know, we have it in the resolution, but we could put it here if we really want to. The next paragraph, it says, already we had districts must continue to have flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnership with teachers and families. And this is where I tried to incorporate the literacy instruction section and put in including materials for reading and literacy instruction. And that way, that can cover whatever the district needs it to cover there. It can, it still says that we want that flexibility, without being really specific and saying specifically phonics. Then on the next page, the back, this is all under funding. Most of this is just changing from BEP to TISA, so that's what I changed there. What I would like to do here is take out the references with the BEP numbers and the 123 at the bottom that shows where those came from. I feel like we've had these long enough and everybody's used them enough that maybe we don't need those anymore. However, some board members felt really strongly about them last time, so I've left them in until someone says otherwise. Then I added, based on our discussions, increased funding for support staff, such as custodians and teaching assistants. So we may or may not want to keep that in. Under funding levels, it used to say any new funding formula, but we know what that funding formula is now. So I put in TISA, and I said, TISA rules, since that's the part that's being worked on at this time. TISA rules must ensure that districts receive no less than they would under BEP. Then on down, under strengthen and support school personnel, urging the General Assembly to provide incentives. And I added such as funding the praxis tests, but I took out in high need areas, because I felt like that was more of an overall. So what questions do we have there? What have I left out or erroneously included? I can say that we had some suggestions. One was literacy instruction that was specific to phonics, but it was, I think that's going to confuse reading and literacy. So that's why I included it, as I did at the bottom of the first page. The other one was for a parent's bill of rights. And since we haven't actually adopted a position on that, I don't think we can include it in our legislative priorities, since we don't have a position. So the next one was, well, maybe I don't have the next one. Okay, so I only have those. Is that what those are, too? Are those just two different versions?
Yeah, I think two different, one member submitted two slightly different versions.
Okay. We also had another version that has some bullet points, but I think those have already been included. And I know there was some language that someone wanted added about TANF. There is some TANF language under the funding. I'm not sure if that covers what we were looking at adding.
Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I was going to address that, Ms. Owen. Okay, one question just before I get to that. Since the funding formula has been totally redone, do we? I have, I mean, do we need to include this? I'm still not sure we know enough about what the TISA funding will end up being, but, and maybe we need some information from some of our staff members. But that's my question, do we need to include this? Because I don't, you know, I don't want to include it if they're going to look at this and say, well, we addressed that last time.
In the hearings with Commissioner Schwinn, anytime the legislature asked her very specific questions about whether these specific things were included, often her answer was, we cut and pasted from the BEP. So if they cut and pasted from the BEP, then these things are still what they were. I'm not sure that they have fleshed it out enough to be able to say. I don't think they will necessarily know. So I think we still want to say that we need these things, because they haven't included them in any kind of specificity. And one legislator even said that they keep hearing that we need school nurses, and under TISA, it's unclear how many school nurses there should be, so nobody will know how many there are. Oops.
Have you heard of legislation around funding at all?
No.
Okay.
No, I've only heard of one specific piece of legislation, and it wasn't around funding.
Okay. And then I actually didn't realize, because I had asked that the TANF funds be included, and I didn't remember that we had included that last time, so that is on there. So that was one that I had asked about. And then the other thing that I was curious if board members were interested in adding. TSBA, when, and many of us were there, we adopted as one of the legislative priorities a review and corrective, a review and correction of unnecessary requirements on educators. And it reads, this is straight from the TSBA agenda. "TSBA urges the Governor, General Assembly, and State Board of Education to establish a comprehensive, collaborative, and thoughtful review program of Tennessee laws, rules, regulations, and policies governing teachers to recommend improvements to reduce educator workloads, to facilitate teacher focus on the mission, to facilitate teacher focus on the mission of educating Tennessee's children." So I don't know what would come of that, but it's, I know a lot of times when we're having discussions, we reference a state law or a state, you know, a board, a state board rule. So I thought that that may be something that this board may want to consider.
I think we have something similar. It's at the bottom of strengthen and support school personnel. It says that processes, procedures, reporting, and burdensome data collection requirements should be streamlined and simplified or eliminated when possible to allow more time for teaching and learning.
Yes, I do think it's the same thing. I think it may be helpful to pull it out since TSBA, because it reiterates what TSBA will be advocating for. So I would like to see it pulled out and be its own special little section.
Okay.
And those were the two things that I had highlighted.
How do you feel about keeping in the recommendation pieces under school nurses, counselors, and social workers? Do you want to keep those specific recommendations, or? I think we could take funding for school nurses, counselors, social workers, mental health professionals, and we could take out those bullets and just leave it the major bullet. Does anybody else have a feeling on that?
I'm okay pulling that out.
And then if they don't do anything, we can put them back.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was going to suggest that we actually eliminate all references to BEP, because I think as soon as they see that, they're going to think just what Ms. Warren said, that, oh, we've addressed that. That must have been a hangover, or whatever, or something leftover from the last one. So I would just remove the references to BEP. And I do agree, Ms. Warren, with adding or delineate in that language and making it, kind of highlighting it. And I don't know whether or not we use that bullet point that we already have and just kind of pull it out, under put its own section. I actually like the way the TSBA language read on that.
I think it will all fit.
Yeah.
Are you looking at that language from our book we had, or from what they sent out later?
I think it's a hard copy, so I'm not sure where I got this.
Okay.
I don't know. I think they sent it out. Is that right?
I believe it's in the information.
Yes, I think it was from their website.
Will you flip that around? Can I see at the front of it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's straight from their website. I must have printed it. I don't know.
I think they sent it out to us in the email.
They did.
Yeah.
Mr. Tripoli.
I would like to see the section on Parents' Bill of Rights added, just supports for parents. And I kind of combined some of what Ms. Henderson put on there with mine, but a parent's bill of rights, and then just supporting the legislature in their efforts to protect women's sports and prohibit explicit content from libraries. I just appreciate some of the things they've done, and I'd like to support those things. And I felt like they all kind of fit under that parents and students rights. So I'd like to see those added.
Currently, there's a lengthy list of parent rights that's on the state website. I'll bring that next time and make sure everybody has a copy, so that we don't look at something that's going to conflict with that.
Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Triplett. And I actually did revise mine, the old copy. Excuse me, it says parents and student rights. And I did have Terry provide a revise that said parental transparency. I just think it's important to add this language. I think several of us, I know I've heard from parents over the past few years, they do have those rights, but I think the challenge is they're unaware of those rights. And I think that we need to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. I know that this is important at the state level coming up. And so I just think it adds clarity, it doubles down on parental involvement, and it just codifies everywhere where parents do have those rights. So I personally would like to see that in there. And I do agree with Mr. Triplett's additions. I think they kind of work well together, and it just reinforces what some of the state has already done.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time looking at the academic and retention decisions and making sure that it was very specific. And this doesn't have that specificity. For example, we don't have, we don't have what we would consider apparent, how that fits in with guardians, which I think if we say parents, that's going to leave out a huge swath of people who are guardians of our students.
That's fine. I just think it's important to have it in there. And I'm happy to add it and come to a vote. If it loses, it loses. If it wins, it wins.
So just to be, for clarification, the document we have, there's two sections here, parents and student rights and literacy instruction. So the parent and student rights.
Right.
Looks like it is kind of the combination between what Mr. Triplett and you proposed, right? So what you're saying is you want this in there. So on the bottom of this, there's also the literacy instruction?
Right. I did bring that, yes.
Was that addressed with what?
I would like to see it a little bit more specific, just because, you know, teachers are, we need to equip our teachers with what they need. And literacy has been such an issue. It is at the forefront of every conversation. And I think that we have to make sure that the teachers are teaching and giving them the equipment that they need to make our kids successful. So I would like to see it specific with the language that I provided.
I think we might need someone from the staff to address the difference in reading and literacy, to discuss why that might not be the best language. Is there someone who can address the difference?
I do also think it addresses the fact that phonics is becoming more on the forefront at the state level, too.
Dr. Wilson, you look like you were ready to jump in on that one.
Well, actually, I would be happy to have Dr. Phillips come up and answer any questions about the differences in that. I will say, as I have been sort of texting and talking with them, they don't have that actual document in front of them with what it said currently about phonics and literacy. So you'll have to probably catch her up to speed on what that says in terms of changing that language.
I can provide you with a copy.
So the question then was in relation to the differences between reading and literacy, correct?
Right, because this is talking about literacy instruction, but then we're sort of conflating reading with literacy. And I think that's going to be very problematic for the legislature when we are looking at those two different things.
So I think it's important for us to understand, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I think it's important for us to understand the process of learning to read, and that entails more than phonics. So when we think about foundational literacy, we're developing phonological awareness, which is the broad umbrella. Then we're breaking it down to phonemic awareness, which is that each sound, each letter is represented with one sound. However, we're not making a grapheme association, which is the letter association. Then we move into phonics, which is that one-to-one correspondence between a letter and a sound. Or grapheme mapping, which allows us to associate letter combinations for specific sounds within our English language. And so those are all ways that we build up students to learn to read. Once we've broken the code and we have the ability to decode successfully, now we are reading and we're making meaning from what we read. We're still encouraging making meaning from what we read all along the way as we build our competencies and our skills-based competencies. Those skills-based competencies enable us to be able to break the code and decode and be proficient readers and writers. I think it's important, as we address learning to read, we think about the specific components around foundational literacy that enable our kids to be successful. And then when you think about reading, what is the main goal of reading that you want to attend to in whatever language you put before the audience in which will read this? So we want students to make meaning from text. We want students to be able to engage in critical thinking around what they're reading. We want students to be able to respond both orally and in writing to what they're reading, and to be able to make arguments against what they're reading, for what they're reading, to be able to employ that critical thinking component. I don't know if I fully addressed your question, so I'll stay right here if you have more.
Well, it's not that it's so much my question. I think I just want to be sure that the board understands that reading and literacy are not the same thing.
Reading is an element of literacy, I think, is one way to look at that.
And if we're talking about phonics for literacy, that's problematic. And I don't want to confuse the legislature with that language, because when we're looking at phonics, we are looking at that base of reading. And that's, that's not necessarily going to lead us to literacy, you know? It's going to lead us to reading, but there's much more involved in that.
I think, if I could add one more thing, I think what's, what I'm thinking of in response to what you've just said, Ms. Owen, is that decoding and encoding are reciprocal processes. And so when a student has a firm foundation in phonics, they employ that knowledge in the element of reading, but also in the element of writing. And so literacy is a comprehensive aspect of learning that engages students in not only decoding for the purpose of understanding, but encoding for the purpose of responding to what we read. I don't know if I've helped you.
No, I appreciate that.
So the place that I tried to incorporate that is at the bottom of the first page, where it says districts must continue to have flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnerships with teachers and families, including materials for reading and literacy instruction. So I think that would better cover the swath of materials necessary, rather than only including phonics, which is going to be very limiting. The piece that it looks like I have failed to include is teacher trainings. So we might want to add that back in, including teacher trainings, materials, and reading and literacy instructions. Would that, would that cover that same idea?
Can you say that again, please?
Flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnerships with teachers and families, including materials and trainings for reading and literacy instruction. We could add including appropriate materials and trainings for reading and literacy instruction.
I'd like to add then, to support the science of reading.
Said that last sentence, the Knox County Board of Education urges the state legislative bodies to continue to support the science of reading through teacher trainings and materials for literacy instruction.
Go to Mr. Butler, and let me think about this for a second.
Reverend Butler.
So, and this is just mine for clarification. I was looking at the draft that Jennifer gave us. And I thought we were adding to that, but it seemed like, Ms. Chair, you went back to the literacy instruction one, so which one are we amending?
Well, we're starting with this.
Okay.
And.
So if we're doing that one, we would be including, what I'm hearing you say is including materials for the support, to support the science of reading, training, teacher training, and literacy instruction?
Right, well, that was, yeah, that was the question I had asked Ms. Henderson, because these items are the ones that were suggested by the other board members to incorporate into the draft, if that makes sense.
I'm sorry, we.
So.
I think we want to support the needs of our students instead of supporting the science of reading. I mean, if we want to support the needs of our students with.
Did that answer your question, Reverend Butler? Did we answer your question about the, trying to kind of incorporate the?
Yeah, I think we got back there.
The suggestions, yeah.
So it would include that second sentence. Urges the state legislative bodies to continue to support the science of reading through teacher trainings and materials for literacy instruction.
What if we said including appropriate database materials? Would that cover the science?
So adding that to the end of that sentence, then?
Including appropriate data-supported materials and training for reading and literacy instruction, does that cover it?
Can you read the, can you start from the beginning of the sentence?
Districts must continue to have flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnership with teachers and with families, including appropriate data-supported materials and trainings for reading and literacy instruction.
I'd like to keep it the last sentence, but then include that at the end. So Knox County Board of Education urges the state legislative bodies to continue to support the science of reading through teacher trainings and material for literacy instruction, including appropriate data, materials.
Do you have some, something that defines the science of reading for the purpose of this?
I can include that.
So.
Basically, phonics-based. But let me draft something real fast about.
So it sounds like, so with this draft, it sounds like the, we'll have two versions maybe to consider on Wednesday? Is that what we're saying? Because I know you're saying you feel strongly about keeping the parental and student rights portion, that's what I'm hearing. And so we need to either squeeze that in, or maybe have two versions to?
Historically, we have not added anything in our priorities that we haven't taken some kind of position on or had some kind of discussion regarding. So that's, that is problematic to me, to include something that we haven't had public discussion about at all as a legislative priority.
I also think we've had the same legislative priorities for years and years without changing them. And I think each year, the point of this is to update them.
Well, there seems to me to be a lot of red on this page, so that's definitely not what was there before.
So if there's a, which it sounded like there's a disagreement on that item, so it sounds like, Ms. Henderson, probably what we need to do is have, we probably need to have two versions on Thursday. And then if you can incorporate your language into the other working draft And then if you can incorporate your language into the other working draft that we've been working on.
That's fine, and I can include Mr. Triplet's in that since it goes along with the parental transparency piece, if that's okay with you, Mr. Triplet.
And then the, and Ms. Warren's suggestion of the wording change on the?
Yes, it would just be adding the TSBA wording on review and correction of unnecessary requirements on educators.
So did anybody feel strongly about not, about keeping the BEP references in? Are we all in agreement that that, the BEP references need to go? Does everybody?
Yeah, that needs to go.
I think everybody was good in taking those out. And to be clear, we're taking out that whole section, not just the reference, right? We're taking out the bullet points, school nurses, counselors, social workers, because they are in the main bullet point. So it still has those all there, we're just not breaking it down to the numbers? Or do you want to keep the numbers and just take out the BEP references?
I think we should take all of it out, and I think it would be, I almost think we should acknowledge under this section that there has been additional funding added. I think there needs to be some acknowledgement that they've taken action.
Can we say continued funding to make it clear that, that that has increased?
Any ideas, everybody? Because I, I mean, they, they've added significantly to the budget, we just don't understand what that impact is going to be yet. So I think we need to acknowledge that. Otherwise, I think we lose credibility.
Okay.
So you could say something like that, like acknowledging that, you know, the state has added additional funding, we would like for you to continue.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Those efforts, maybe something, you'd have to wordsmith that, that you.
I'll work with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was also, I mean, there's one other kind of language thing that we've kind of talked a little bit about back and forth, and that is between Mr. Triplet's version and Ms. Henderson's versions, Parents' and Student Rights and Parental Transparency. Actually, in that version, I actually prefer the parental transparency version, only because I, I believe that our Parents' and Student Rights is already enumerated. And to me, it sounded like, Ms. Henderson, you were trying to more communicate to the legislature that although, yes, Parents' Rights are enumerated, that there needs to be more information and transparency about what those rights are.
Correct.
And to me, in that version of it, I would prefer seeing that language versus the other.
I don't have a problem with the transparency language.
Correct. So this was the, the first one, the Parents' and Student Rights was the one I brought a month or two ago. And so the parental transparency is my updated, so that is the language that I would prefer. Thank you.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate that language, Ms. Henderson, for the parental transparency. Also, I'm still going back to the funding, I'm still wondering whether we should pull out the TANA. We have it under funding, which obviously is an appropriate place for it.
You want it separate?
But I think it should be separate, going back to the same reason on the other one, just to match the TSBA. And we don't know if they're using that at all, and that's a lot of money. And they, we need to be advocating for that use.
I would agree with that.
Ms. Henderson, did you have?
No.
So does anyone have anything else? Ms. Owen, do we?
I think I've got it all.
You think you've got it all?
Yes, and I will, I will try to send everybody a copy tomorrow to see if I've, and if I've made errors, if you'll get with Ms. Cottney and let her know.
Okay, all right. So moving on to public forum, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one speaker signed up, Lance. You have three minutes. You know the drill.
Lance McCold, Knox County, Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you for listening to me. I, I wanted to talk about a bigger, the custodian issue, but I want to correct a couple things that I heard today. One was that the custodians are being paid $15 an hour. That number is not true. Our custodians are not actually getting $15 worth of benefits. They, it's $10.08. The indirects, the payroll taxes brings it to less than $12 an hour. You only get $15 an hour if custodians take health insurance benefits equal to the average of the county, which would cost them $2,500 a year out of a $20,000 salary. So you can be sure that very few of the custodians who are supporting themselves and not having an outside source of income can afford to take our health insurance benefits. The other number I'd like to point out is that we are, we raised the pay for, of our custodian 16% in the last two years. Well, that means that we were paying them $8.60 two years ago. So 16% sounds like a lot, but when you start with that base, it's not nearly as generous as it sounds like. But I want to focus your attention on the bigger problem. We have, we have places for 669 TEAs in this district, and we are 20% down. If you go to the, the website, there's 146, last time I looked, at vacancies. Those people are paid less than $19,000 a year. So, yeah, and it's a tough job. We don't have enough substitutes. We also know we don't have enough teacher. That's a long-term problem. I appreciate the, that you're doing a salary study, but 2025 is way too long to drag our students through the shortage of staff that we have. You know, we know that the salary, salary, salary study is going to be a lot more than what we're paying custodians, EAs. So waiting till then to, to raise the, the wages doesn't make any sense to me. It's just putting off and subjecting our students to another school, whole school year of understaffed schools. You know, I, I think that there's, there's really only one solution, and the board needs to say to our superintendent and say, you know what, we have to pay a market rate for our staff, because otherwise, we're not going to fill it up. All the fancy things we want to do and, and stuff, it's just not enough. So let's be realistic and look at what businesses are doing. They are responding to the market by raising their rates. For us to do not is, is like, that's crazy. So, you know, let's act now. We can't solve the, the custodian contract may be what we need to do now, but let's not spend another year sitting on our hands because, oh, we don't know what to do. But we know that at least part of it is adequate market rates, wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes public forum.
Board forum. Sorry, Mr. Triplet, 7:30. Ms. Dackard.
I just wanted to say I hope everyone had a great first day and is able to finish off the spring semester strong.
Thank you. Reverend Butler. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If someone from the staff could talk with PBA about the acoustics in this room, I think it would be helpful. What I hear from board members is that board members are hearing noise from the audience, and what I hear from the audience is that they can't hear the board members. So there's, there's some kind of issue with this room. I, I mean, obviously, being a long room like this, the acoustics are going to be horrible. But if PBA could take a look at that, maybe that would help our, our issue.
I think they're working on some better mics, too, with acoustics. They tried that once and.
It's not a microphone issue, because it's, you know, the audience isn't mic'd, and we can hear them better, they can hear us.
But for them here, but for them hearing us, I think that they're working on some better mics.
Mr. Watson. Ms. Henderson. Ms. Pike. Ms. Horn. Mr. Triplet. Mr. McMillan. All right, meeting adjourned.